For the City of Troy, open for August 2014. And I know that we have one absent member here tonight. We'll address that in a minute. But the first order of business will be the roll call. Before I do that, I'm going to actually ask our Vice Chairman Bruce Bloomingdale to read, for the public's interest, our procedures here for this board, for your participation or your review. And so if Mr. Bloomingdale could read this information for your interest.
Good evening. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers, appointed by City Council, to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the Chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the City Administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the Chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the Chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, they live next door, they're behind the property, and so forth, then state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give the reasons for their opinions. Comments must be directed through the Chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible, and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the Chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the Chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless, in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has a right to appeal the Board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So, at this point in time, I'll just introduce everyone at the table and the staff that support the work of the Board here. And I'll start with the Board. So, to my far left, to your right, is Mr. Lambert, who is a member of the Board. And then, to his right, is Mr. Eisenbacher, another member. And this is Mr. Kret, who is a member of the Planning Commission, but also serves on this Board. So, he's our liaison to that particular Board. I'm Glenn Clark. I'm the Chairman of this Board. To my right is Mr. Bloomingdale, the Vice Chairman. To his right is Mr. Courtney, the longest-serving member of this body. And over here to the side is Mr. Evans, who is our liaison to the City Administration. And then, to his right is Ms. Dufrain, who is an Assistant City Attorney, who helps provide legal advice to the Board in front of you, which are citizens here in Troy. At this time, I believe we are prepared, Mr. Evans, for the roll calls. We can announce that we have quorum for this meeting.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Kret?
Here.
We do have quorum. One member is absent tonight. Moving forward, we have minutes as item number two. Are there any questions from Board members regarding the minutes of City staff, or any other discussion, or is there a motion to be made? Mr. Courtney?
I'll move the minutes, but with one change. The one resolution, the moved and supported are reversed.
The maker of the motion?
I did not move it. I supported it. And Mr. Eisenbacher?
Can you declare which motion that is?
Offhand.
Was that the first case or the second case? There were two cases.
I think it's the first case, isn't it?
It would be the A.
Let me see. A, 4A.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Courtney's motion?
I will second that.
Mr. Eisenbacher, thank you. Any discussion on that? Mr. Courtney, do you just want to briefly mention that again on the record?
Okay. To approve the minutes with the correction, that item 4A was moved by Eisenbacher, supported by Courtney.
Very good. Any other members? Hearing none, Mr. Evans, I believe, prepared to vote.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kret?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. The next item is the approval of agenda. Are there any questions or concerns related to the printed agenda presented to us? Hearing none, this will be our agenda for our business meeting here tonight. Item 4A, hearing of a case regarding a variance request from 4205 Crooks Road, a person by the name of Lali? Is that pronounced? Okay. Very good. And, Mr. Evans, if you could, please present the facts of the case to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated in tonight's agenda, this matter is for property at 4205 Crooks. As printed in the agenda, the request is in order to split a parcel into two parcels, a .05-foot variance to the requirement that newly-created parcels measure at least 100 feet in width. One of the parcels is proposed to measure 99.99 feet in width. I do have a brief presentation. If I could direct everyone's attention to the overheads behind and the left and right of the Board. The subject property is located north of West Waddles Road, on the west side of Crooks, and the overhead is the one outlined in red. Now, I've zoomed in on that same aerial to give everyone an idea of the configuration of the parcel, and also the surrounding parcels. And what I've done with the next slide is overlaid the zoning in yellow. The subject property and all surrounding property is zoned single-family residential, the same residential classification. Now, specific to this request, the applicant seeks to split this parcel into two, parcel A and parcel B. The City zoning ordinance requires that the parcel width at the setback line be at least 100 feet. One of the parcels can meet that. The other one, parcel B to the south, at the setback line, which is a line parallel to the front property line, a distance of 40 feet back from the front property line, that width is going to be 99.95 feet wide. So, in order to get this property split, they need a .05-foot variance. The Board's packet does include an email from the City Assessor, also giving some understanding as to the requirements for this, as ultimately, the City Assessor is the one charged with signing off on lot splits. I'll turn it back over to the Board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions from Board members for the City Administration? Mr. Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Evans, and this is, I guess, a question also for the Chairman. Since we only have not a complete Board here tonight, should we be offering the petitioner the opportunity to postpone action on this, if they have any concerns about whether there's enough votes here to approve this variance?
Well, I'll just briefly address that, and then, of course, the bright mind at the end of the table here might have a different perspective, but normally, at this point in time, we, you know, until the petitioner comes forward, after this information from the City Administration, then they oftentimes will introduce or introduce themselves, oftentimes presenting the facts of their side of the application, and then, you know, it's made at that point in time. But I guess, since we're talking about it, we might as well cover it now. So, since we are not a full Board, and there's an alternate is not available to fill in for one of our absent Board members, the petitioner has the right to request a delayed action to another meeting when there might be a full Board. That's not a guarantee that there'll be a full Board at the next meeting, because these things do happen. But also, our Board here has a right to move forward tonight, regardless of how many people are sitting up here, as long as we have quorum. So, that's something for the petitioner to consider here in the coming minutes or tens of minutes. So, Mr. Evans, do you have anything further?
Well, and if I could add, the petitioner would need four yes votes for his variance to pass.
Sure. And that's what makes it interesting for the petitioner to factor that in, four affirmative votes to pass any request. Ms. Dufrain?
Just to add on, addressing Mr. Lambert's question, if the question is related to timing, as long as you haven't started any deliberations or decision-making process, as long as the applicant has the opportunity, knows and has the opportunity to decide for himself or herself whether to proceed. So, just addressing your timing issue, as long as you haven't started deliberations or decision-making process, we can go forward.
Okay. Mr. Courtney?
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand this. If they had another 2/3 of an inch of property, they wouldn't need us, they would meet the requirements.
If it is 2/3 of an inch, whatever the amount is, yes.
Actually, it's less.
Well, that's correct. Yes, it's a 1/5 hundredths of an inch.
Yep.
So, that is an option for the petitioners?
A foot, I'm sorry.
To make that request to the Board here today. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Looking at that map plan that you just had up, one slide ago, the yellow with the zoning, looking at the properties to the rear, it appears that both of those are less than 100 feet wide, given the width requirement. It appears that, except for the corner lots, that most of these lots are in the 100-foot or 95 to 100-foot range. Is that accurate?
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't check the widths of all the other properties in the area.
Okay. But visually looking at that map, it appears that the predominant layout is properties in the narrower than 100-foot, given the width of those red lines. From the GIS data, it looks like they are less than 100.
Certainly, I have the ability to pull up a current GIS map with measurements, if the Board would like to see that.
You could. That'd be...
Just so everybody knows, I can do that if needed.
So, while you're doing that, we could ask the petitioner to come forward, if there are no other questions of the City Administration at this time. Seeing none, will the petitioner come forward to the podium, please? And please identify yourself and your relationship to the property or to the property owner.
Yeah, my name is George Reichert. I'm the surveyor. That's Mr. Avila's wife. He was in an accident last night, and he had surgery this morning. So, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
So...
Would you like to, hearing what you had heard us discuss just minutes ago, would you like the Board to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, please state your information you want to share with us.
Yes. On this particular parcel, the platted dimensions, when it was originally platted, was a little bit wider than what the actual measurement is now, just based on where the monumentation is, as far as the lot width of the parcel. If the platted parcel was exactly like the plat shows, it would have met the 100-foot requirement. But since it's a couple inches short of an overall dimension, it ends up being just short at the setback line. So, really, that's the hardship of this lot, is it's not like it's supposed to be. It's a little bit short in this particular case.
Okay. Any questions of the petitioner's representative? Mr. Eisenbacher?
So, basically, what you're saying is, is that the monument is slightly off from where it is supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay.
The monument?
Yeah. The lot markers are...
They're steel...
Instead of being 100-foot, they're, you know, 99. something instead of 100 feet. So, overall dimension is a little bit short.
Okay, so, basically, the title and the layout of the land was for a 200-foot piece of property. When you went out and measured it, they were a half-inch off.
Correct. In this particular case, this particular parcel starts at just under 200 feet at the front, in the actual road when it was originally platted, and then gets wider in the back as it goes back. So, they took the 27 feet for the road. So, our parcel is supposed to be 199.93 record dimension at this new setback line of 60 feet, but it's actually 199.66. So, it's actually almost three inches short of what it was recorded.
Okay, so, it was just an error using old measurement processes?
Um, or that's just where it was staked over time, and what we try not to do is disrupt everything. If that's where all the points are found within an inch or two, we try to keep lot lines harmony.
Anyone else for this gentleman? Mr. Courtney?
This is your survey, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, it shows 100, over 101 feet at the back.
Yeah, that's correct.
On the, or over 201 feet, if you took...
Correct, at the...
Current lot.
Yeah, at the current dimension in the back, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. You can have a seat. Thank you. So, at this time, we are going to open the public hearing for the general public to make commentary to the Board before we consider anything. So, I'll open the public hearing, ask anyone who would like to address the Board to come forward, and please state your name and your relationship, if any, to the address in question, to parcel in question. I think we have a customer. Good evening.
Apparently, I drew the short stick. We are the family from...
Identify yourself.
Stacy Gazinski, from 1043 Fountain Drive.
Is that right there?
It's right above the property.
Welcome.
We sent you an email before 3 o'clock today. Yeah.
You can receive it. You can have it.
Yeah, we currently, we just moved into this property in December, so we were kind of surprised when we saw this come through. And it's really going to kind of impact generally the privacy on our lot. We feel like it already has, with some of the trees that have been removed. So, we were hoping that we could work it out so that we could maintain our privacy. And then, in seeing the map with the survey, it's way worse than I thought initially, because if we could put that slide up, where the garage is, is a nice distance away. But the way that it's plotted out, I'm going to have a house on top of my back fence, for sure. So, we're Lot 59, basically. And I'm sure that these houses are going to be, as you pointed out, that the lot sizes are around 100, 95 to 100 feet on our area, but our houses, I'm sure, are not going to, is not as large as what they're going to put on there. So, I guess we have some concerns about proximity to the neighbors and what you bought.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for this lady? Mr. Lambert?
Yes. Mrs. Gazinski, I'm going to ask the City Planner in a moment here, or the zoning specialist, a question about the setbacks, but I don't know if you may be aware or not, that that home, wherever they put it, may be farther away from your property line, or away from your home, than the two homes on both sides of you. Would that make things a little easier for you to deal with, if we were to show that that home would be farther away than those two adjoining properties?
Well, of course it would be, because it's in the back. So, I have my whole backyard. But looking at that setback, I mean, how far is that setback? I have...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm going to ask him in a few minutes, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's going to be pretty close to the back of our property, for sure. So, I mean, if we're able to, you know, put in a better fence that's up there, and maybe some landscaping in there to give them privacy and us privacy, we could probably be okay with it.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Bloomingdale?
Ma'am, you sent us a letter, correct?
Yes.
In that, you had, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if I could ask the lady if it would be okay to read the requirements for the benefit of the petitioner?
Sure.
The first request is that a position of the new structure not be directly behind our house. A second position of new structure will have a predetermined distance from our property line. We would be okay if the new structure was in a similar position to the detached garage currently on the property. And third, a new vinyl privacy fence be erected to replace the current fence, and appropriate greenery be landscaped to protect our privacy and block sound. Is that a correct reading of it? Okay.
Yeah. So, then, in response to that, the garage, as you can see, is pretty far over, so I'm sure that the house would not be able to be that far away from our property, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Courtney has something?
Yes. You realize you've got a lot of property there, you can do what you want with the back end of it, and create your own privacy?
For sure, yep.
Okay. It isn't necessarily the guy, it's building that has to provide you with privacy. Both of you can do that.
Well, I understand that, but I'm also now going to have to deal with the construction and other things as well, the dust and...
I've gone through that, so I know what that is.
Yeah, noise, I...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You can have a seat. Thank you very much. Anyone else under public comment during this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. I'm going to ask the Vice Chairman, Mr. Bloomingdale, to give us a overview of the communications we received via the public by letter or email.
Well, we have a second letter that's opposed, and I believe the name is Ann Solinski, and her address is written as 4215 Carson Drive.
Okay, so, there will be two communications, the email referenced by the lady who just spoke, and then the letter, handwritten letter that Mr. Bloomingdale just referenced. And I know all Board members have received those. So, we'll bring it back to the Board for consideration. Is there any discussion, or a motion, or inquiry of the City Administration? Mr. Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Evans, what, if the lot split is approved, what would be the setback that's required for that home on the north end of the property, as far as the distance from the property line?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lambert. That would be considered a side yard setback. They could go as close as 10 feet to that property line with a brand-new house. They would have to have at least 15 feet on the other property line.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to have a question, comment? Yes, Mr. Eisenbacher?
I'm curious if you've had a chance to look up what the width of the surrounding properties are.
Well, I can show the Board the map, and we can go through it together, yeah?
Wonderful.
Now, I can't see these numbers from where I'm sitting. So, what I can do, if it's okay with the Board, is maybe go counterclockwise. We can take a look at the lot widths for the properties along Fountain. And these are the lot widths along the street lines, not along the setback lines, but I think it gives everybody a general idea of the configuration. Can everybody see that reasonably well?
Yes, absolutely.
Let me know if you can. I can zoom in.
90, 90, 67. 82. 95. It appears that Stacy Gazinski's lot is 90 feet wide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. 82. 83. 106 in the back. Yep. 90. They're all under 100?
Except one.
Yeah, except one, yeah. Oh, yes, you're right, except one. This is an R1B, this whole area.
Right.
Yes. Mr. Kret, 100 to the lower right.
With a bump out.
There must have been some lot averaging to allow that to happen?
You know, I didn't check before I came in, but it's possible. I really don't know. I just didn't check. Yeah.
Okay, the green space was the allowance, okay.
It could be, but I certainly can't say for certain, because I wasn't prepared for the question.
It appears that way. Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point in time, Mr. Courtney, you'd like to speak? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Evans. This proposed new house is setting back from Crooks 130 feet?
Oh, is that on the site plan?
That's on...
Or the proposed split survey?
Plot plan. Shows 130 feet setback, is that...
Well, if you're asking me to read what the plan says?
No, is that a permitted distance?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
It just seemed a little excessive to me, that's why I...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's on the table for the Board to consider. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion at this time?
I'll let you do it. I'll make the motion to approve, based on, based on it meeting the criteria... Let me get to the criteria page. Based on meeting the criteria, A, the exceptional characteristics of the property is the fact that it was improperly laid out at its origination and placement of the monuments, and does not match the original survey width. And B, it is obviously for this premises. C, it is not a personal item, it's something that existed well in the past during the original monument placement. D, characteristic that makes the compliance with dimensional requirements difficult, must not have been created by a current or previous owner. It was not created by the owners, it would be created by the surveyor that placed the monuments. And E, is definitely not harmful to the essential character of the area which the property is located, as we just saw in the display. Most of the properties in the area are not meeting the 100-foot width, and a half-inch variance is extremely minimal. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, and I just have a question for the makers of the motion. The email received, which the lady addressed to the Board, you know, she's asking for screening of several kinds, is that part of your, would that be part of your motion or amended motion, or friendly amendment to address that, or is the motion as stated?
My motion is as stated. I believe that fencing is outside of our purview as a BZA. That would fall under the other zoning requirements. Unfortunately, when she purchased the property, it didn't include the property to her rear. I'm sorry to be that blunt, but another person owned that property, and except for a half-inch variance due to an error many years ago, they are in compliance with our zoning ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Evans, do you want to address the fencing item that Mr. Eisenbacher just spoke about?
Is there a question?
Well, I believe it's outside of our purview as BZA.
If the Board, the Board can impose conditions if they believe it's reasonably related to the item in question. So, I don't know, that's, really, that's my response. It's up to the Board if they want to impose any conditions, but the Board would also have to have a level that the conditions they do impose are reasonably related.
Mr. Lambert, do you have anything else on that? No? Okay, Mr. Bloomingdale?
Just to take the last comment into consideration, basically, that request would move the house approximately 50, 60 feet more towards the road. To put it approximately where the garage is at.
Please.
And to add a little bit, it would increase the backyard, obviously, and shorten the front yard.
Any other discussion items, Mr. Lambert? Do you want, are you interested in making a friendly amendment? Or an amendment, I should say?
I'd like to, but I'm just trying to get a, grab hold of a reason for a specific amount. I mean, I don't think we can throw an arbitrary amount and say, oh, 15 feet instead of 10 feet. I mean, they're trying to look at the property right now and determine if there's some feature on there that makes a, where you could have a reason for such a setback.
It's based on, wait, sure.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
I mean, based on what was stated about it being reasonable and related, I believe we could go add that half inch to the 10-foot setback. I mean, so it'd be 10 feet and a half inch.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, I mean, we're talking about a half inch. It's, it's, this is the smallest variance I can imagine because it's less than the width of the survey stick. I mean, everything else is just following our zoning ordinance.
Right.
I agree with Mr. Eisenbacher's said, you know, at the most, we would consider a half inch, but, you know, mortar slop on a brick could be a half an inch. I think it's, I would just leave it as, as the resolution is stated right now, and my second stands as is. I wouldn't change a thing.
Okay. Mr. Lambert, did you have something further? No? Mr. Courtney?
You know, I'm opposed to lot splits, but when you get down this small, I don't, I don't see how I could be opposed to one.
Mr. Bloomingdale, did you have anything?
I know, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Crandall?
One last comment. The setbacks for the R1B, right now, let me just get to the page for a second. The front yard setback has to be 40, this is for lots with sewer, I take it, this has a sewer on it.
Yeah.
The front yard setback is, the minimum it can be is 40 feet. The minimum for one side of the two side yards is 10 foot, and the other, and the other at least 25 foot, and the rear yard is 45 feet. I don't think the neighbor that objected to this has any ground to stand on because this is an R1B. These are the requirements and the ordinance. Any home built within those requirements for those setbacks that meet those setbacks should be approved. I don't see an issue here at all. I think that half inch is, I'll get into discussion later when we get into comments, but as far as this resolution, I believe everything as it stands. The setbacks are, this, whatever home's placed on this has plenty of room to fit within those setbacks. I don't see, I mean, it'll be, I can see that they can build a home in compliance easily in this district within this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I believe then we, Mr. Evans, are prepared for a vote.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Congratulations, you have your variance. Now, on to item five, communications. Mr. Evans, do you have anything? Mr. Frain, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, actually, I do have a communication. Ms. Bloom, the city attorney for the city of Troy, asked me to let you all know that in maybe October, more likely November, she's going to be offering a training session, a refresher course for many of you on the Open Meetings Act, and that there's, she'd like to extend an open invitation to all the members of this board to attend that at the planning commission. So, I'm, this, just as a tease, if you will, Ms. Bloom asked me to say just a few things at today's meeting. I did not redo these slides, so some of you may have seen these slides already, but just briefly, the Open Meetings Act is obviously important, something important for us to follow. I think you're all familiar with it. It's statutory, starts at MCL 15.263. Essentially, the Open Meetings Act requires that public have an opportunity, it's due process, public has an opportunity to be heard and notice that a meeting is taking place. The definition of meeting is found in the act. It's the convening of a public body at which a quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating toward or rendering a decision on a public policy. And the key words there are deliberating toward or rendering a decision. You can have an informal canvas of the members of your board prior to a meeting, and that's not a meeting unless you disclose to the other members of your board what your informal canvas results are. That would be a circumvention of the OMA. Next slide. Oh, you did it. I know there was a question earlier, or last week regarding email and whether or not replying to all in an email is considered a violation of the Open Meeting Act. There is not an easy answer to that question. The rule of thumb that we like to follow in our office is that we prefer that you not reply to all to any emails that go out. There is case law that suggests that an email between the members of a board could be considered a meeting, and it would be a violation because it's not open to the public and the public didn't get, didn't get notice of it. So if you have, especially if there's any deliberation or, you know, discussion about where you're leaning or what your decision would be, that's absolutely not going to be tolerated in a reply to email. So just be conscious of the fact, when you get an email from someone, I mean, the city administration, just try not to hit the reply to all. Same goes, I don't, we don't find ourselves having conference calls very often anymore, but if we, if we were, same thing there. If we have a quorum of members on a conference call, that would also be considered a violation of the Open Meeting Act because the conference calls are not generally open to the public, and the public doesn't have notice of those. And why does it matter? Again, it matters because it's due process, and the city, we strive really hard to try to keep the city out of court. It's very important that all of these meetings are recorded. Obviously, they're archived, they're recorded. If anyone wants to challenge the decisions that this board makes, all of those decisions are kept in the archives. We, you know, we make sure that, you know, our door is left open. It's not to get a nice breeze in here, it's to make sure that if someone's walking by and they want to come in, they know that there's, it's an open door policy and that anyone is welcome to come in. And if they're, I know at times during some of the more heated debate during council sessions, the doors get closed, but there always has to be a sign posted out there saying, there's a meeting in session, you're welcome to come in quietly. I know there are occasions where we have overflow rooms downstairs in the employee lounge and in other places throughout the building. So we strive really hard to make sure that we violate the Open Meetings Act. So that's just a few things. I know you all know all of that, but Lori is going to, hopefully, she's going to update these slides. And again, you're all welcome. I'll make sure I tell you what date, which planning commission meeting that training session's going to be, probably November, maybe October. It's okay?
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions, anything? Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Evans, anything else?
Well, I'd just say overall, that my experience with this board in the last few, well, since I've been working with this board since 2010, we've all done a wonderful job. And the rule of thumb I always go by is, don't do anything where there could be an appearance of doing something wrong. I don't think anyone at this board is, or any of our board that I'm aware of has done anything wrong, but sometimes just the mere appearance or question. So everyone on this board's done a great job, and that's the rule of thumb I go by.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Crandall?
I just wanted to, another miscellaneous business. You know, the city of Troy is almost 60 years old. I cannot, I, it's hard for me to believe that another item that we just heard, something similar to that, hasn't come before the city before. In other words, we're talking less than an inch as far as requiring a variance. I will take this, I'll add it to my list, if it's all right with this board, to the suggestions to changing our ordinance, to come up with some kind of more reasonable dimension as what is allowed and what isn't allowed within, when we do lot splits. I mean, it's, it's, this guy, this person spent $150 for that half an inch. I'd like to make that go away so that people coming in with, you know, an inch or less don't have to see us. It could be an administrative decision. Anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Well, first of all, let me just, if you have a communication, then we'll, I'll call upon you. If not, we'll close communications out and move on to miscellaneous business. That's okay. So it's all about keeping the ball down the court. So, Mr. Eisenbacher?
Okay, it's not, okay, so now we're in...
Miscellaneous business.
Miscellaneous business. Okay. Along the lines of Mr. Crandall's idea of bringing this to the board, it seems like this is a tolerance item. Like, every, all of our dimensions that we have in the zoning ordinance are a fixed number with no tolerance whatsoever. It seems like a plus or minus three inches, or a plus or minus whatever, could be applied to them to resolve as an issue, just because of historical, like this, like the surveyor brought to us, there's historical errors in how properties are laid out.
Thank you.
And I think that also did come to us when the house was situated a little bit off. And I don't know, I don't remember how much that was, if it was six inches or four inches, but it was a few inches also that time. So I, and in my work as an engineer, when we measure parts, there's an increasing tolerance as the part gets bigger. So that might be a better solution also. Like, if you have an extremely small part, a small dimension, the tolerance is smaller than if you have a big dimension. So over 100 feet, we might have a 1% or a half percent error or whatever.
I appreciate that. That's good, good input. I'll bring that, those kind of comments to the planning commission.
My comment on that is, not to be contrarian here, but I'm going to be for a second, and that is, you know, what the city administration does on a daily basis, it's hard and fast for not just city employees as far as looking at property, but the surrounding owners of a home or prospective owners, when they're looking at a home or parcel, they know exactly what is called upon. And when the errors do happen, think that there has to be action taken. But we have not, I've been on this board for a long time, we have not been inundated with errors in this regard. You know, I could see that this was an issue where there were so many survey companies out there making so many errors, and, you know, maybe the public said, you know, half inch is okay, but, you know, if a half inch is okay, what about three quarters of an inch? And that's only a quarter away from, you know, so where does it end? So, I mean, I'm kind of like a, in the sense, a black and white person. The city has a record of, you know, hard and fast numbers on file. When Mr. Evans deals with a developer or homeowner or prospective owner, you know, they can ask a quick question and he can give a definitive answer right away versus, well, you know, that's not the case right now. So that's why I think this board kicks in, we represent the citizens of Troy, and we can actually say, sure, half inch, quarter inch is not, is not an issue. So that's my thought, and, you know, I kind of like the fact that there isn't really any ability for someone to wiggle around the ordinance and the districts that are planned out, which is through the planning commission and two city council. I think that's the proper process, but, you know, maybe I'm wrong. So, Mr. Bloomingdale, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I'm like you, black and white, you know? But the practicality of it is that even the temperature can affect, depending what kind of equipment you're using, the accuracy or dimension. If a guy is really doing his work right, he'll factor in weather, if he's using a steel tape, for example, because he knows it's going to be a little bit longer. So I concur with the idea that we develop some kind of reasonable tolerance, and I like the additional comment where it should be also the size of the property taken into consideration because I think the comments are already made. The longer the distance, the more potential for error, and, in fact, the tolerances are higher, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't want to, is anyone else had something else to say? Well, I encourage Mr. Crandall to bring comments to planning commission. The problem that we would run into is there has to be a black and white line somewhere, and when you start talking about reasonableness, then you venture off into arbitrary and capricious. So I encourage you to have the discussion, continue the discussion, but from the legal department's perspective, there always has to be some sort of black and white line. And for changing it for the sake of change, you know, I don't know if that will happen, but continue the discussion, absolutely.
Thank you. A question on that?
Yes.
Is that the reason that this petitioner come in, spent $150 to get that half inch, because of that black and white idea?
Well, in essence, yes. I don't know if you've had a chance to review Mr. Lucari from the assessing department, his email, it's the last page of our, of our packet, but he kind of offered the explanation. He's charged, he's charged with, you know, assessing this property in the city, and if something is off, someone's going to have a hard time getting insurance or getting a mortgage. So it's a black, it's a black line in our, black and white line in our ordinance, it's a black and light, black and white line with respect to assessing. So there's, it has ripple effect is what I'm trying, is what I'm trying to say.
I'm going to do this.
It's the very last page, it's an email, August 13th, I believe, is the, page 17 of 17. Is that right?
I just missed that one. Well said.
I think...
It'll be on the computer version as well.
Yeah, here's, here's a copy if you...
I think, you know, it's advisable for the planning commission and the legal and city staff to continue dialoguing. I just can't imagine, as far as the insurance companies go, you know, how can you insure a parcel in a city where you don't know what you don't know, and you won't know it until you don't, you're told, you know, this is now determined, you know? So I'd be interested in, of course, this isn't anything for the board to discuss or be concerned with, but what recourse these, this property owner has to go back to the survey company to get to redress, obviously, a faulty survey. I don't know anything about surveys, but, you know, they, I know they have to have insurance for those things to deal with things of this nature. So the $150 fee that they had to pay to be before the board tonight, I think they're perhaps entitled to something far greater than that for their challenge of having to jump through some hoops, but it's, it certainly is unusual to me, but once again, I'm just saying from personal experience, I've been here for a long time. This is the first time something like this has ever addressed, so it seems to me that it's that once-in-a-lifetime situation that we saw tonight and, but, you know, gave us an opportunity to get together in August, and what else would you have to do tonight if you didn't have this one issue? So, Mr. Bloomingdale, yes?
Legal counsel. We have a black and white requirement. So my question is, then, we also have the latitude in the course of a meeting like this one here to take in a reasonable, we just did. staff to continue dialoguing. I just can't imagine, as far as the insurance companies go, you know, how can you insure a parcel in a city where you don't know what you don't know and you won't know it until you're told, you know, this is now determined, you know? So I'd be interested in, of course, this isn't anything for the board to discuss or be concerned with, but what recourse these... This property owner has, to go back to the survey company, to get to redress, obviously, a faulty survey. I don't know anything about surveys, but, you know, I know they have to have insurance for those things to deal with things of this nature. So the $150 fee that they had to pay to be before the board tonight, I think they're perhaps entitled to something far greater than that for their challenge of having to jump through some hoops, but it certainly is unusual to me, but once again, I'm just saying from personal experience, I've been here for a long time. This is the first time something like this has ever addressed, so it seems to me that it's that once-in-a-lifetime situation that we saw tonight and... But, you know, gave us an opportunity to get together in August, and what else would you have to do tonight if you didn't have this one issue? So, Mr. Bloomingdale, yes?
Legal counsel. We have a black and white requirement. So my question is, then, we also have the latitude in the course of a meeting like this one here to take in a reasonable... We just did.
Exactly. That's exactly what we... That's the purpose of this DBA, is to take a look at a set of facts and circumstances and say, okay, there's reasons, as Mr. Eisenbacher expertly pointed out in his motion, there are reasons to allow the .05-foot variance. So, yeah, that's exactly what the purpose of this board is.
Thank you. Well, seeing that we can move on to the next agenda item, which I believe is public comment, so I'm going to ask the general public if... You'll have to come to the podium, sir, and you'll have to state your name and give us a little piece of information about yourself, and then you have the right to address the board.
Joseph McCoff, I live in the city of Troy. There was a... I thought it was going to be on the agenda for today. This is a parcel property, PUD, I believe it is, for 16 Mile and John Arden.
Okay.
I don't know if that was on the agenda today or...
It's not on the agenda, but you can contact the city staff tomorrow to get more information. Mr. Evans will be here afterwards. He's always very kind to answer questions.
I heard, I was out of town.
He may have a quick answer for you, Mr. Evans.
Sounds like something at the Planning Commission, though.
I'm thinking it might be, and I can get your contact information, definitely get back to you tomorrow, or have the planning director get back to you and let you know.
Thanks a lot.
Sure. If you just want to wait until the meeting's over, I think we'll be done pretty soon. Thank you.
Mr. Crandall is the Planning Commissioner, sir. He may want to say something here.
At our last meeting, we looked at that property. We did... It was only informational meeting, it was not a decision meeting, so we did review it. There were a lot of comments. They're in the minutes. If you'd like to go over them, or I can talk to you after this meeting a little bit, get you some info on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good question, just not the appropriate body to be addressing it here tonight. So I don't see anyone else who'd like to address the boards. We'll close out public comment, and that moves us right to adjournment. Thank you. Anything else, anyone? Hearing none, we will see everybody in September. Thank you.